Hello, I'm Lorette Ligan, President of the Jacksonville Onslow Chamber of Commerce. And before we begin our forum, I'd like to ask everyone in the audience to please silence your cellphones and other electronic devices. Thank you. On behalf of the Chamber of Membership and our Board of Directors, I want to thank you for joining us for this forum on slow. The Chamber works with government agencies on issues that affect our business community. We monitor legislative issues that impact local businesses. We promote partnerships between business, government, military, and education, and we use these forums to create awareness on topics that are important to our entire community, such as the election of those that represent us on the state and local level. We are pleased to have Duke Energy as a sponsor of this Meet the Candidates forum. Derek Reamer is the District Manager for Duke Energy North Carolina Government and Community Relations. His territory is 11 counties here in eastern North Carolina, so you can imagine he's a pretty busy guy, but he did record this message for you today.
Hello and welcome candidates. I'm Derek Reamer, your District Manager for Government and Community Relations at Duke Energy. We're proud to sponsor these candidate forums and thank the Chamber of Commerce for working hard to make sure you're given this opportunity. At Duke Energy, we're committed to providing reliable and affordable power. Our rates remain below average, and we continue to make improvements to strengthen the grid. Most recently, this can be seen in our response to Hurricane Ian, where we were able to get almost a million customers in the Carolinas back online in just a few days while also responding to the devastation in Florida. This is proof of our continued investment in infrastructure and people. Our line workers are an especially valuable asset who consistently go above and beyond, often working in the harshest conditions to get things back to normal. We all owe them thanks. And finally, thanks to each of you who continue to aspire to help your communities by running for public office. It's in tough times like Hurricane Ian where your service will be of most value, and for that, I thank you. Good luck.
Now, let's begin our forum with our moderators, Mr. Elliot Potter and Mr. Jeff Hudson.
Thank you, Lorette. And to all the candidates, we thank you for showing up and returning, a return engagement for you. For some of you, maybe more than once. Today's forum, of course, is with our Onslow County Commissioner candidates. We have four candidates who are on the ballot this year. They're seeking three seats, and we were anticipating that perhaps we would have all four here today, but we're missing Paige Wagner. On the ballot is Pete Wagner, but we will move forward and continue with the program. How about, let me go over some of the rules so we can get everything straight. You probably know them by now. I should probably not be able to read it, but I do read it. Here are the basic rules of engagement. This is a forum, not a debate. You are to address the questions that are posed to you, and you are to address the audience and not address each other. All the questions will be general in nature and suitable for all candidates. In other words, we're not going to pick on anybody. We've reached the general election, which means our candidate fields are smaller. That gives you a little more time to connect with voters. We've expanded the response times. You will have 90 seconds for the opening, 90 seconds for your Q and A sessions, 90 seconds for the summations. You just, we, again, will have the rebuttal cards. You can use the rebuttal card twice, but those only allow you for 30 seconds. And I'll call on you. If I miss you somehow, just holler at me, throw it at me, whatever, and I will ask you, I will call on you. Those are 30 seconds, so use them wisely. And at the end, again, we'll have summations, and there are 90 seconds. We do have a system for telling you how you stand on time, and we do ask that you adhere to the timelines, the time limits fairly closely. In fact, we had a little discussion earlier about the, some of the other panels have not gone with a full hour and a half, and I think that worked just fine, I mean, excuse me, first minute and a half, and I think that worked just fine. When you see the red light, when you see the 30-second light come on, or the yellow light, that's 30 seconds. When you see the red light, that means your time is up. And what I ask that you do is just stop at that sentence. It may sound incomplete, but it's better than completing a thought which can go on a little bit longer. So we'll go with that. We do ask that the audience refrain from applause so we can keep the program moving, and we are going to try to, maybe, we might go over a little bit today. We try to keep the other panels to about an hour, but we go, we'll go between an hour and hour and hour and 15 minutes probably today. So if there are, are there any questions? All right, well, we're going to start with the opening statement. And Lisa Carpenter, we'll move right on down the table with that. Lisa Carpenter, Tim Foster, and then Royce Bennett.
Okay.
Please, Ms. Carpenter.
Great. Good day, everyone. I, I'd like to say I'm pleased to be up here. These are always my favorite things, is to be able to address the crowd. I best, I'd best get over it, though, because it'll be part of my future. My, to tell you just a little bit about myself, I live in the southwest part of the county, as I, my friend Tim here, too. I always love it when people say, "What do you do?" And I'm going to be really flat, honest with you. I'm a domestic engineer. I, I used, I have a background in sales and customer service. I've also been a small business owner, and I am a very avid volunteer in our community. I've served on the Onslow County Republican Women's Club as President for two different years. I'm currently the Membership Chair, very active in all the events that we do to build up our Republican Party here in the county. I also am active with our church. I'm a member of Lighthouse Baptist Church, and I work actively with our children's ministry, and I teach children's church every month. And with the women's group, I also do a lot of fundraising and other service events that we, or service activities that we do there as well. I'd like to say I'm a great wife, and a parent, and a friend, and a very concerned citizen who just really wants to do more than anything to serve Onslow County to the best of my ability.
Thank you to the Chamber for continuing to host these forums, and thank you to Mr. Elliot Potter, Mr. Jeff Hudson for moderating, and always to Ms. LaShay for keeping us in time. I was born and raised here in Onslow County. This is my home, one that I want to ensure remains strong and vibrant, where people want to come live, work, and raise their family, where we provide services they expect at a level above their expectations, a county that is conducive to business and growth. I've been married for 32 years to my wonderful wife, Tasha. We have two sons, Cameron, who's full-time with the National Guard. He's married to Shelby, who works for the Onslow County School System. And then our youngest son, Peyton, is a senior at Campbell University studying Political Science. I graduated from Southwest High School, UNCW with a Bachelor's in History, and East Carolina with a Master's in School Administration. I served 31 years with the Onslow County Schools, with the last 15 as principal, and in 2018, I was named Principal of the Year, and June 30th, I walked out the door as a retired principal from Onslow County Schools. I'm completing my first term as Commissioner and served the last two as your Vice Chair. I believe in Onslow County. I believe in our people. I believe in our service to our community. That has been my career, service to my community. My belief in service and giving back is why I chose to run the first time and continues to be my why. Service and giving back helped shape me, and your blessing and your vote. I look forward to serving this great county because it's a great place to live, work, and raise a family.
Ms. Bennett.
Thank you. Hello, Onslow. I'm Royce Bennett, County Commissioner. I've been privileged to serve for about six years now. I want to thank the Chamber and the sponsors for this event today. You know, I can't think of a time in my life that I haven't served my community. I started when I was 12 years old as a volunteer firefighter. I earned an EMT certification. I became a rookie police officer, worked my way up through the ranks in the Police Department. I bought and operated a Christian bookstore and built four stores out of that, and I've been in real estate in Onslow County for 17 years now. I've always started at the bottom, just like most of you, and I start at the bottom when it comes to serving my community. I serve at, as Vice Chairman of Onwassa and as Chairman of Salvation Army, where we meet the most basic needs of our community, of water and food and clothing. I also was a founder of Onslow Strong Disaster Recovery Alliance and the YMCA, where we're working to, to help people recover from disasters and build a community pool. I'm a member of the Chamber of Commerce, Rotary Club, Economic Development Partnership, the Onslow County Memorial Hospital Board, and I'm a deacon in my church. And I think it's important for you to know that today Onslow County is better prepared for an emergency than it's ever been. I'm always working for the future of Onslow County, and I'd like to continue to do that. I'd love to talk to any of you about these issues. My phone number is 910-389-9638. You can call me or text me. Thank you.
All right. We had a little malfunction there, but.
I couldn't tell how long I was.
We did fine. It's okay. All right. So the next round of questions will begin, will be asked by my moderating colleague, Jeff Hudson, who is our Chairman of our, of our Chamber Board, and he will ask first to Mr. Foster, and then we'll move to Mr. Bennett and Ms. Carpenter.
Thank you. Mr. Foster, name something about Onslow County that you dearly love, and then tell us something about the county that you dearly love to change.
Wow. What I love about Onslow County, that's going to take more than a minute and a half for me to really go into that, but I just love Onslow County and what we are. We are a county that is growing with small-town roots, and that's what makes us so special, is that we cannot forget where we come from. Growing up in Onslow County, it was small. I remember Western Boulevard, two-lane road. It was a dirt road at one point, and I remember everybody knew everybody. And that kind of continues here as we move and grow, but at the same time, we don't want to move away from those roots that makes us so special that brings us people here. But I'll tell you what I do love about Onslow County, that's the saltwater. I love the saltwater, and I love my boat, and I love what we're able to do here recreational, and that is, is as concerned, especially down on, on North Topsail Beach and enjoying that. What I would like to change about Onslow County, I would love to see us create more opportunities for our youth and more opportunities to bring people to Onslow County outside of tourism and our military base. One thing that I love to see take place in Onslow County is the building of a multi-sports complex or a multipurpose building there where we can host the athletic events, bring people here, as well as start hosting the military balls and other conventions that Onslow County would benefit from, and put, put some heads in the beds and some more tourism dollars to continue to make Onslow County great.
At any time, if a candidate wishes us to repeat the question, we'll be more than happy to do so. At this time, we'll move to Mr. Bennett with the same question.
Thank you, sir. Things that I love about Onslow County, I think, I think I love the, the diversity and the vibrance of Onslow County. We're, we're a wonderful, growing community. People get along here. We're not like, we're not like other places where people fight all the time and, and are at odds with each other. I just love the community of Onslow County. I always say, you know, we're the biggest small town in, in North Carolina, I think. You know, we, we have this huge population, but we, we act like we're a small, small town. I think we get along like, like we're a small town. And I got to agree with Commissioner Foster. What I'd like to see, I'd like to see growth in our infrastructure. I'd like to see more opportunities for our kids, and we work on that all the time through our Economic Development Partnership. We're working to, to bring in businesses and to, to take care of some of these things. I work on the Transportation Board to make sure we bring in infrastructure opportunities wherever we can and to, to grow our water and sewer capacity with Onwassa, and I'd like to see that continue to grow so that we can make Onslow County better. Thank you.
Ms. Carpenter.
It's funny, when I moved here, we moved to Richlands back in 2011, and I remember thinking to myself, "Oh, my gosh, you have to pack a lunch to get into Jacksonville because it's so far out there." And little did I know that that would come to be a place that I wished I'd moved to because I do love the rural part of it so much. This community is, it is diverse, like Royce was saying, and it is small, like both Tim and Royce were saying, and I love being able to go out wherever I'm shopping, wherever I'm doing my business, and running into people that I know that I've either worked with or done business with, or that are my friends that I'm serving with, and it really is just a great community to live in. My kids, I remember when we first moved here, like, "Mom, we just ran into somebody we know at Walmart. Isn't that great?" Because we'd come from a bigger place. So that means a lot to me and my family. Things that I'd love to change, although we are a small-town feel and community here, I still feel like there is a lot of involvement that could be fostered, and I'm not really sure exactly how that's all going to happen, but I do feel there's a distinct difference between the government and the board and the community that I'd like to bridge. I feel like there's a lot more communication and engagement that can happen. I'm not sure exactly what that's going to look like, but I really do feel maybe forums, town halls, something that will, I'm a cheerleader, so I'd like to cheer the rest of the community into their interest in being involved in what happens in our county, because it's our county.
Okay. And Mr. Bennett, you'll get a crack at this question first, and we'll then move around the horn to Ms. Carpenter and Mr. Foster. Mr. Bennett, aside from being essential to our national defense, our local military bases are the foundation of our local economy. What can you do as a Commissioner to protect the training mission of these military installations?
Well, we have a, we have a joint committee where we, we, we have an overlay that, that provides zoning regulations that, that prevent encroachment on our military so that we can protect that military, that military training area. And that's, that's probably the biggest thing we can do. It's JLU's Joint, I can't remember what it stands for, but anyway, Joint Land Use, right? So yeah, we, we work that every several years. We redo the Joint Land Use Program so we make sure we don't encroach. You know, we have, we just, a few weeks ago, had a meeting with the base representatives and talked about issues that happened between the county and the base. It's, it's about communicating. It's about making sure that we, that we talk to them, and they talk to us, and we cooperate and do what we need to do to, to keep Onslow County a viable option for, for our military.
Ms. Carpenter.
Could you just say that question one more time? I wrote notes, but I'd like clarification. Thank you.
Yes. Aside from being essential to our national defense, our local military bases are also the foundation of our economy here. What can you do as a Commissioner to protect the training mission of our military installations?
Okay. First of all, be a good wife. My husband's involved with the military as a contractor, so kind of joking aside, but I do, I've heard a mixed bag. I've been going out doing a lot of connecting with constituents, door knocking throughout the community, and it's a mixed bag. Some people say that the way that, that our community is, is very friendly to the military, and others would defer to otherwise. And so I do feel like we need to have, I don't know, more communication and maybe some, some ways that we can, again, bridge the gap that's a communication issue right now somehow. We're not, I think we're not serving them in some different avenues. I had a gentleman yesterday that was just confused about how to be getting some help with a WIC issue. So I don't know exactly what that looks like, but I do know my background as a military wife. I was an ombudsman for my husband's command for three, three years back in San Diego, and I have a heart for the military. I really am looking forward to being able to be more active in whatever capacity I can because I understand how families, what they need as far as just support, and so I really want to be active in doing that.
Awesome.
That's a very large umbrella, what I think many, many aspects to it is, as Royce had mentioned, is maintain the land use, Joint Land Use Agreement we have with them to maintain the areas of training that the Marine Corps needs. But other things that we really have to continue to focus on is the families of our military personnel. When the military personnel are deployed or they're in the field and they're training, they have to know that back home, their families are taken care of, which includes solid schools that their kids are being, taking care of, that they're getting the appropriate education, that they know that they're safe and secure in these schools. They know that public safety in Onslow County, when their families are out shopping and out enjoying some of the aspects of Onslow County, that they're safe, they're secure. So when they're in their mission, they're in their mindset, that that's not something that they have to worry about back here at home. And continue the relationship we have with Albert J. Ellis Airport and the support it provides with the coming and going of our military personnel and different things that comes in and out of that, that airport. And we also need to continue that working relationship between the leadership of Marine Corps Installations East and currently General Niebel. Bring them where they bring us on base to interact with them and speak with them and talk to them. We also need to bring our municipalities together and including the leadership from Marine Corps Base and really talk about the issues that we're facing so we can maintain the structure we need to enhance and support them in their missions. Make ready, according to General Niebel.
Okay. And I think the next question, we'll go, start with Ms. Carpenter.
Yep.
And it'll be asked by Jeff Hudson.
Ms. Carpenter, and we'll, we'll go straight down the table from you to Mr. Foster to Mr. Bennett. Major hurricanes have the power to alter the very configuration of Topsail Island. The island's north end appears to be vulnerable. What measures should be taken to either further protect the island's development or, in the alternative, limit development?
Wow. You just come hard with those questions. That is, I really am not exactly sure what exactly to say about that, except for, I'm going to go back to what I said in the first forum. I don't know all the answers. I mean, I, I do know that that is, it's a very vulnerable place there, obviously, and I know that the erosion continues to encroach upon the buildings there. I think that there's probably got to be some kind of studies that are done with, you know, what that looks like as the years go by, because every year it gets worse. Maybe consulting with engineers and specialists that would be able to give us an idea of what, what's the right thing to do. I do think it's really a volatile area that maybe doesn't need to be built on, kind of like during, oh, my gosh. Tim, tell me what hurricane was it in Mississippi, I mean, in Louisiana? The big hurricane?
Katrina.
Thank you, Katrina. Gosh, use my, my brain during this sometimes. During Katrina, it's like, why are we building in a place that is clearly below sea level and going to be subject to devastation and a real big expense for everyone?
Mr. Foster.
North Topsail Beach is a beautiful and wonderful, 11, I think it's 11 miles of Onslow County along there, and hurricanes have traditionally, as you stated, restructured, changed the shoreline. I've been sitting on and working with the Beach Inlet and Sound Committee with members of North Topsail Beach. One of the things that they were involved in was bringing in, I forget the amount, it's like $250 million worth of work coming on to the beaches that North Topsail saw that that's not something they could sustain, so they, they pulled out of that. But they are, have taken some steps to really add sand to their beach to extend that, and they are now discussing the possibility of a, of a terminal groin at the New River Inlet, which will help them in that sense. But at the same time, we don't want the terminal groin to increase the sand and the shoreline at North Topsail and have a negative impact into Pender County at the south end, at the south inlet. So whenever we do go into that, we have to make sure when they do the studies that that groin is not only going to support North Topsail, but it's not going to have an adverse effect on South Topsail. So Mother Nature, you can try and control her. Good luck. I remember when Fran and Bertha come through and what it did to our beach, and that's a beach that I used to surf at, the Brick House, that was way off, or off the shore, and the Brick House is now waterfront property. And times have changed, and North Topsail, along with Onslow County and our state folks, are going to really work to maintain the, the viability of North Topsail.
Mr. Bennett.
Thank you, sir. You know, I've worked with North Topsail Beach. I was at one of their council meetings just, just a week or two ago. It's, it's been a big issue for Onslow County. We love our beaches. We like, we like to keep them. Looking at the studies that have been done and what, the best that I can tell, I mean, it looks like a terminal groin or a jetty are probably the only ways that we're ever going to save that, that north end of the island. And I think we have to continue to work for, those, those solutions are not something that Onslow County can afford to do. So we have to work with federal and state representatives and find, find funding statewide and federally. I believe that keeping the New River Inlet open is, is a huge deal that should be important to our military as well, and a jetty or a groin that would keep the inlet open would also accrue sand on the beach, so, from, from the studies that I've seen. So it looks to me like we need to continue to pursue with the federal and state governments some kind of jetty or groin in the New River Inlet to protect that beach.
All right, thank you. We're going to move now to Mr. Foster. You'll be first at this question, and we'll move to down the, I believe we'll move to your, to Mr. Bennett, and then across, around the horn to Ms. Carpenter. I'm actually going to combine a couple of questions here about county elections and the county terms here, county, for county commissioner. First one would be, would you support any kind of term limits for county commissioners? And what type, if you do? And the second would be, what about a, the establishment of a district or ward system for commissioners so that we would, to ensure, or with an aim of ensuring representation from all geographic areas of the county? And what would your system like that look like? Is that enough for you, Mr. Foster?
I think so. Maybe throw one more in there. Mr. Hudson's about to. Term limits. Right now, obviously, we have four-year in our term. I'm running for hopefully my second term, which would be eight years, and just yesterday, I was discussing term limits. If we're going to discuss term limits in Washington, then we need to discuss term limits locally as well. If I'm fortunate enough to come out of this as a kind of second term, after four years, I'll have to make a decision if I'm going to run for a third term. If I do make the decision to run for a third term, third term's going to be it. 12 years of Tim Foster is enough, and it's time for someone else to have a vision of continuing to move Onslow County forward. As far as districts and ward systems in Onslow County, there's, it's, to me, it's a double-edged sword because if I am elected in a district, then I feel beholden to that district and not all of Onslow County. And I don't want to just work for that district. I want to make sure my efforts are in working for all of Onslow County. However, if we had to have a district or ward system, I believe it would have to be a hybrid system where we would have maybe three to five districts, and then we would have to have three, two to three at-large members as well. But with that being said, I don't want to go beyond hybrid, but also am afraid that we get into districts, we forget that it's a huge county, and just working for one district could have a negative impact on what we can accomplish in Onslow County.
Ms. Bennett, what's your thoughts on the idea of maybe a district or ward system and also term limits?
Well, I'll start with term limits because I, I wouldn't, I'd be willing to look at the possibility of term limits, but I think it's important for people to realize the difference between federal positions and local government positions. You know, we don't go to Washington DC to get rich like they do and stay there all their life. We serve here for minimal compensation, and we're, we're here with our, with our peers and our constituents every day, and we see what the people, what the people need, and I'm not sure, I'm convinced that statutory limits are required locally. But as far, and as far as districts, I, I just have to look at what the city of Jacksonville is going through right now. I mean, they just got a lawsuit filed against them because of the districts. Every 10 years, they have to redistrict, and they have to sue and get sued, and everybody's suing everybody else. And I question whether or not that's a good use of our taxpayer dollars. I think that the, the commissioners, we are, we do represent the areas, different areas of the county. We have commissioners from Swansbury, Hubert, Jacksonville, and I'm just not sure that districts will work in Onslow County because of the military and the difference that that makes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Ms. Carpenter.
Regarding term limits, I would say, I mean, first of all, term limits, I think it's a great concept, and I've been pro-term limits for a long time, except for the fact that term limits is also another regulation imposed by the government, which I'm always not for. That's double negatives. So I think the people have a choice as to what the term is that people should serve in their voting typically. However, that being said, I also feel like it is important to get fresh ideas in every single election that you can, or maybe a couple. I mean, as a Commissioner, I can see where maybe four years, you wouldn't I mean, as a commissioner, I can see where maybe four years you wouldn't be able to accomplish quite as much as you would like, and then maybe after two, then it is time to pass the buck. I have found so many people that are out there that are interested and have ideas for what could be a great contribution to the county, and I always encourage them, it's your turn next. This isn't something that I woke up one day and said, I'm going to be a commissioner. I was always dreaming of being a commissioner, but it's time for everybody to serve. As far as the ward system and the district system, that's something I also pose questions to, to a couple of people in office or in the county. I guess it was attempted at one point. I can see the advantages to it because there are, although there's different municipalities that have town council and city council members, there are different things unique to each little aspect of our county that I think need to be represented and known to. And a couple of us here from southwest, and I don't think the south parts needs very, and Holly Ridge are represented quite as much right now.
Okay, for our next question, it'll be asked by Mr. Hudson, and we will start with Mr. Bennett and work around the horn.
Mr. Bennett? What are your general views on Onslow County's economy? Is the county reaching its potential in terms of retail and industrial development?
Onslow County has a great economy. We always have. It's, you've been mentioned already that we're driven by the military, but it's also something that we don't want to have to be dependent on, the military. And we have to do everything we can to improve our economy and bring in more retail and industrial development. Retail, the fact is, retail comes where the people and the statistics show that they need to be. And there's not a whole lot we can do about that. If the retailers see the dynamics, the statistics that they want, then they'll come here. But industry is a different challenge. You know, we're working to bring rail access to Onslow County again. That would be a huge accomplishment that would bring industry in Onslow County. We're working to build a pool which would give us a, an economic driver, gives us quality of life, it relates to quality of life issues that won't mean, make industries want to come to Onslow County. So there are a lot of things that we can do to improve the economy in Onslow County and make it better, a better environment for industry to come in.
Ms. Carpenter?
Thank you. I would say that probably retail and industrial have not hit their maximum yet in our area. I do know that with all of the families that we've got coming, mostly from the military and California that are moving here to Camp Lejeune, that we're going to have some growing needs in both of those areas right now that I think need to be addressed. I do think it's important that we're creating an environment that is fostering interest in people coming to our area. I was at a Joe Ed meeting, Jacksonville-Onslow Economic Development, yesterday, and that organization does so much great work to really try to resource businesses that are interested in coming here and enticing them to come here and looking at the whole picture. It's just a phenomenal organization. I know when I was at the last forum, I don't think I understood fully what they do, but it is such a great organization that brings a lot of, a lot of great industry here. But that is something, I don't think we've reached our cap yet, and yet, on the other hand, I kind of hope that we won't go too far because I don't want us to be another Raleigh or Charlotte either. So it's going to be an interesting dynamic to try to maintain it. But I do know we need to have some more diverse jobs that are industrial in nature and because there's a whole area of the employment sector, I think, coming out of the military that need positions like that to be available.
And finally, we'll come to you, Mr. Foster.
Our retail network in Onslow County is obviously growing, and I do not think we've reached our peak of that yet because I don't think we have reached the peak of the number of folks that will be coming to Jacksonville, Onslow County, and our surrounding municipalities. The economic development here is extremely important. Jacksonville-Onslow Economic Development has done a lot there. The success at Holly Ridge on the south side of the county and the businesses that are coming in there into their industrial area, and then down in Swansboro with the businesses that are coming there, and the Jacksonville, Jacksonville's industrial park is bringing business in. But if we want to bring them in, we have to give them not only an incentive to be here, but an incentive for their families to be here so they'll have the employees that they need to run these, which we continue to have to build and support, a strong education system with Onslow County Schools. And then Coastal Carolina Community College is the diamond here for business and industry to look at what they can do to train them locally and move them right into a business and a job or industry and a job. So it is imperative that we know that we have not reached the peak, but we have to be prepared and really start looking at infrastructure to maintain what we have coming in and to enhance what's coming in the future.
Okay. Well, we're going to start with our next questioning with Ms. Carpenter, work our way down the table. We ask some version of this question just about every forum, so, and that's because the answer changes. And we are in an area that has a sort of a different housing market. What is your current assessment of the housing situation in Onslow County, including the situations that face both the people who own homes and those who are looking to purchase or find affordable housing?
I will not proclaim to be an expert in all of this. I do know that there is a housing need, and it's not just for single-family dwellings or multifamily dwellings, if that's the right term for it. But I do know for even younger families and military, for instance, young families, that there needs to be some more apartments, diverse kinds of resources, or not resources, choices for them to have. At a meeting I was at, and I can't remember which one it was, I know that there have been some new developments that have come up in the south side of the county, which is great. I know we've got a number of them here in Jacksonville as well, but I do feel, I don't know, it seems like there is so much development going on, however, I know with the market the way that it's been right now, that there are not enough houses for people. So I think that there's probably still some development that needs to be done, and I know that's a very incomplete answer, and I don't profess to be an expert in real estate, so I'd probably need to talk to some people that might be able to help me with that a little bit more.
Okay, and Mr. Foster?
Housing in Onslow County, just look at the cost of homes and what has taken place in Onslow County. And I think if I remember correctly, and Royce can correct me on this if I'm wrong, but in the past year, we have built 1,100 or at least 1,100 new homes in Onslow County, and we're still at a need of homes in Onslow County. Affordable housing is definitely an issue here, especially with New River Shopping Center, what used to be New River Shopping Center, with the homes there that have to, had been condemned. But we have some new affordable housing that have gone up in areas in the county, in the southwest area, we have some down in the Holly Ridge area. But affordable housing is definitely a concern with what we lost at the homes of New River. We have a couple of organizations that are working to rebuild that and make sure that that is available to the folks that need it. And it's not going to stop. We still have military personnel that are scheduled to come here over the next few years, and the housing is going to continue at this rate, and the cost is going to be something that is going to have to be considered as we build the new homes because 1,100 in a year and we're still behind, there's still a long ways to go to make sure we have not only affordable housing, but housing in general.
And Bennett?
Thank you, sir. You know, 17 years in the housing market here. It, I've been through a lot of different markets, buyer's markets, seller markets. You know, we had a crazy market in '08 and '10 when things were selling like crazy. And the, but now it's different because we don't have the inventory that we had before. So we certainly, as Commissioner Foster said, we don't have, we don't have enough housing for the people that are here. And that causes a domino effect because when you don't have, when the housing prices go up, the rental prices go up, and incomes don't keep up. And we see it two-tier, we have a two-tier economy here, there's no doubt about that. We have federal employees and contractors who make a lot more money than the folks making hamburgers at McDonald's. And it's a real struggle for some people to find housing. We have allocated $5 million from the Affordable Care Act to try to support some affordable housing in Jacksonville. There are affordable housing units that are going up all over the county. It's going to be a while before we catch up. It's a challenge, housing is a challenge for people right now.
Okay. And we're going to start this, we're going to start this next round with you, Mr. Foster, and go to Mr. Bennett, then Ms. Carpenter, and the question will come from Jeff Hudson.
Mr. Foster? There continues to be public interest regarding the possible construction of an event or large conference center. What are your views on this idea? What should be the county's role, if any, in making such project a reality?
That has been a discussion and a request I have heard consistently over the last four years. A multi-sports complex is something that Onslow County needs, not just as far as the athletic part of it, but the ability to host conventions, as I stated earlier, balls, to bring people to Onslow County, but also serve the citizens that are here in that manner. And that multipurpose or that multi-sport complex, I'll just go ahead and give you the idea that I have shared, is we can benefit and they can benefit from us, is the Marine Corps Base and Onslow County, and then bring in the city and other municipalities if they want to, to build this facility. Because Onslow County has, I don't want to copyright the name because of the movie, but we could have, Onslow County, Jacksonville could have the Patriot Games. And we host, we host consistently volleyball tournaments, basketball tournaments, wrestling tournaments, baseball tournaments, softball tournaments, and then we host the balls and those conventions. But looking at the sports part of it, we can name each one of those something related to the red, white, and blue, and have opportunities, if the military is wanting to do that or able to do that, bring athletes in to have leadership conferences with the leadership aboard Camp Lejeune, and then get the tour of the facilities. The Marine Corps then gets the opportunity for recruitment on an awesome group of people.
Mr. Bennett?
Thank you, sir. I think there's a big need for that kind of event center in Onslow County. Again, I've heard about it since I started running in 2015, six years or more now. What has to happen is we have to find that right public-private partnership to make it work. Onslow County can't build the facility that we need, and I don't think it's a responsibility Onslow County taxpayers to pay for. The city of Jacksonville, it can't independently do what needs to be done, and we've worked, we've worked for years to find the right public-private partnership. I don't believe that Onslow County government needs to operate a complex. I would like to find, again, the right partnership with cities and county to, and maybe some nonprofits to make this thing work. I think that the YMCA could provide a great model for us. If they've paid for a feasibility study, we're working on feasibility study now for a pool, that would be a partnership between all many different nonprofits and government agencies that could be a model to build a multi-sports complex with.
Ms. Carpenter?
I too am in support of having a multipurpose center. I think it would bring a lot to our county. I have, like I said, I've been getting around town, my job really, I should have said from the beginning, has been to be a Board of Commissioners student because I've been really trying to see what all happens around the county and who the players are and how they contribute. And one person that I've talked with too is Scott with the Jacksonville-Onslow Sports Commission, and he's been really leading up a great, I think, research on what it could be here. I know this project was something that came up in years gone by and then fell by the wayside, and from my understanding, he's working on that now, and I would encourage that he does that because I do, here's the one thing that I do feel like, there is a lot of possessiveness that happens, sometimes it's unnecessary here. For the betterment of the whole entire county, I think the county's role could be to unify the municipalities, come together and maybe have a think tank and resource people like Scott that could come together with answers rather than how it can't be done, and letting go of, well, it's ours, it's the county's, or, oh, it's Jacksonville's, just for the good of the citizens. I think if we could all come together and lay aside whatever kind of claim to fame you want to have with it for the good of the citizens. So that's what I think the county's role would be, is to lead the organization, work with the municipalities, resource the experts that we have, and move forward with it.
The next set of questions, we'll start with Mr. Bennett and then work our way back around the table and end with Mr. Foster. What are your reflections on crime and public safety in Onslow County? How should the Board of Commissioners work with the Sheriff's Office, not just in providing funding through the budget, but also in ensuring that public safety is on the table as a county-wide concern?
So, public safety is a county-wide concern, and, you know, we don't have any control over what the sheriff does, but we certainly have influence. We work with the Sheriff's Office and with the school board to make sure that we have adequate school resource officers in our schools. That's a big deal. I think we ended up, we, to this year, funded school resource officers for all of our elementary schools now. So we're going to have resource officers in all our schools. It's always been a priority since I've been on this board, public safety has always been a priority. We've increased funding to the Sheriff's Office every year, and the sheriff has worked with us to make sure that the funding goes to the right places, that the right programs are implemented. He's been, he's been communicative. I can go to his office and sit down and we can, we can talk about what programs they're working on and how they're taking care of our public. It's certainly a major concern to commissioners that we have a safe community. If we don't, we're not going to bring in this economic development that we're talking about, we're not going to be able to grow our community.
Ms. Carpenter?
I think that's a $64,000 question, to be honest with you, is how to have, you know, public safety be at the height that it could be and to reduce crime. As our economy continues to tank out, as inflation continues to increase, I think that this is going to become a bigger and a bigger issue as we move forward. I'm not of the belief that everything is going to be rosy in the next two years because I don't think it's going to be. And I truly do not know, besides giving the money appropriately and paying our officers adequately for the work that they do, which I understand is something that is being worked on right now, especially with the Sheriff's Office, is to, you know, get them compensated appropriately. But other than that, it's an issue that I feel like is a little bit in the dark. I don't know that there is enough light that is really put on the fact. I think we live here in Onslow County, and I remember having a meeting at the Sheriff's Office when we were, the Women's Club was feeding them one time, and I said to one of them, I said, it is so great to live in such a safe community. And this woman I was talking to is a dog handler, she just laughed, and she's like, I'm glad you think that. And I said, what do you mean? She's like, there's so much that goes on here. And although I don't think we need to scare our, you know, residents here, it's important that they know what is going on so that they can plan and prepare as well, and not keeping things in the dark is important to know, rather than, you know, I know there's pieces of information we don't even get right now, but through Facebook, and that's got to stop.
Thank you. And so, Mr. Foster's next?
We talked about Onslow County, we're talking about growth, and with growth comes increased crime. Unfortunately, that is part of it. You go back historically and you go into communities that had little crime, and as they grew, then it's the nature of the beast. We're fortunate that we have a sheriff and a sheriff's office that is proactive. They are not a sit back and wait. They, Sheriff Miller has put some things in place that has satellite places out into the rural area, further out in the Onslow County borders. He has worked with training and brought in more training, and as a county, we have to support that training. Part of that training is the firing range that we've worked with and have got established for them to ensure that those officers meet the requirements that they have. We've worked to make sure that we are able to pay those deputies and detention officers more so we can make sure we are able to fill the positions. And as we continue to grow, that sheriff's office is going to have to grow, and we're going to have to fund that more. I don't know that- I don't know that the conversation can be had without resources being part of that conversation. But at the same time, we need to celebrate our public safety officers, we need to support our public safety officers, and make sure they have the training, the materials, and the ability to go out and have the leadership that they need to make sure that they take care of crime in an appropriate fashion, that they're above reproach, and we are fortunate, our Sheriff's Office is like that.
Let me, let me just add a little bit to that because we're supporting, we're supporting de-escalation training in our Sheriff's Office. That, I think that's a big deal. They're, they're learning how to not have physical issues with their people. We're supporting body cams with our Sheriff's Office so that there's a record of what happens out there on the street. And those are just a couple more things that I wanted to mention about, you know, how the, the commissioners are working with the sheriff to make sure that we keep our community safe. Thank you.
Okay. I tell you what I'm going to do, I think we're going to move to the closing because we are at about the top of the hour, and we will start with Mr. Foster. I hope you don't mind me shocking you like that. And again, you have, you have about 90 seconds for your closing statements. So we'll go from Mr. Foster and then go to Mr. Bennett, and then back to Ms. Carpenter.
Fantastic. Thank you. Thank you for this opportunity. Onslow County is a great place to live, work, and raise a family. I want to continue to ensure it remains as such, a place for our children, a place for our grandchildren, even for those great-grandchildren that I may never get to meet, but know that they have a county that is great to live, work, and raise their family. I've been a part of a very tough four years in Onslow County. When I come on the board, we're on the heels of Florence and then right into the COVID-19 issues. How did we handle that? We have come out on the other side, stronger financially than we were before we went into it. We learned from Florence, and we learned from the pandemic. We learned that there's things that we're not going to do again, but the things that we learned the most was we have to be prepared for the next issue, and that is to ensure that we have the resources and we have the financial stability to take on whatever we face. One of those things that we learned from Florence is the cost of gas and the ability to get to it, and is even more so today, and our fuel farms will open on Monday. Thousand gallons a day in Onslow County, saving us 15 to 18 cent a gallon. So we have learned from that, and I hope that my job I have done for you in the last four years and part of this community is what will get you to go to the, the polls and vote November 8th. Tim Foster, Onslow County Commissioner.
Mr. Bennett?
Thank you again for the opportunity to, to speak. I enjoyed sharing my ideas, and I'd love to hear from you out there, if you'd like to call me or talk to me about your ideas. Early voting does begin October 20th, and I hope I'll see you at one of the polling sites on November the 8th. When I first ran for Commissioner six years ago, I brought up this, this meeting, a picture of my baby granddaughter, who was, who was just less than a year old at that time. And I said that the children were the future of Onslow County, and I still believe they are. The children are our future, and that's why I'm involved in the community. That's why I serve as county commissioner, because I want to work for the future of Onslow County. I want to make Onslow County a better place to live, work, and play, so my grandchildren and your grandchildren can grow here and stay here. And today, my granddaughter is joined by four other grandkids. I've got five of them now, and my wife in this picture. And I'm going to ask you one more time, help me out, we're going to start at the bottom one more time, I'll be at the bottom of the ballot by the luck of the draw. I want to continue to work for Onslow County and for the children's future. Ask you to start at the bottom, vote for Royce. Let's keep Onslow County strong. Thank you.
Thank you, and Ms. Carpenter?
Thank you. So I, I think I've made it pretty clear in my answers today. I'm not a politician. I've never dreamed of being a politician. I've not even played one in real life, like as a, you know, on TV or in a play. But rather, what I have done is I've answered a call on a prayer request that someone presented to me, which was, "Would you please consider whether being a county commissioner was something that you felt like God was leading you to do?" And so I am working really for an audience of one, to the benefit of the county residents here. And I will always work my very best on whatever it is that's presented to me. I do not have all the answers, but I'm a hard worker, and I am very good at researching. I'd like to say that I'm a uniter. I've been in lots of places where there is a lot of discourse, or dis, there's a dis word, and Tim, I'm not going to ask you that. But a problem solver and a listener. I love connecting people with each other to get solutions. I'm a hard worker. I've always been one of those get in the field and get it done kind of people, rather than, you know, leading from a position. So I'm going to continue to do that to the best of my ability and always do what I really feel is right for everyone in this county, and I'm one of the constituents here too. So I want to do what's right for me and for my family, and I seriously appreciate your consideration. And if I haven't given you enough information, go to my website and check it out. Thanks for your support.
Uh-huh.
You're hilarious, Tim.
You know what? You guys, up to that point, you did a great job following the, and it says a couple of times, you actually, your answers were so comprehensive that they actually overtook questions that we had for you, so we really appreciate that. I want to thank LaShay for doing such a great job with the timer. But I really want to thank my colleague over here, Ellen, the moderator table. Jeff is the chairman, Jeff Hudson is the chairman of our board at the chamber, and we have a governmental affairs committee. These kind of forums, these kind of activities are very important to the chamber, and I think his presence here today, participation show that. And with that, I'll give it to Lorette Legan.
Well, thank you, Royce, Tim, Lisa, for being here with us today. It means a lot to us, and it means a lot to the community. And thank you to the city of Jacksonville for the use of these facilities and their media services, and again, our forum sponsor, Duke Energy. Now, if you missed any part of Form Onslow, just check the listings for G10 for rebroadcast in times. But remember, your vote is your voice in matters important to our schools, our county, and our state. Absentee ballot request forms are available online at the Onslow County Board of Elections website, as well as the dates, times, and locations for early one-stop voting. Election Day is November 8th from 6:30 a.m. to 7:30 p.m. at your local precinct. On behalf of the Jacksonville-Onslow Chamber of Commerce, thank you for joining us for our forum, and this concludes our program.